All right, workshop will come to order. Counselor, you've been provided with a copy of the agenda for the workshop tonight. You had to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Here not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have the minutes from the January 16, 2024 special meeting, the January 23, 2024 special meeting, and the January 23, 2024 regular meeting. And three consignees.
We would option of the minutes and consent ayes.
Second.
So the motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Here not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We'll head in now to FY '24, second quarter financial and investment reports.
Mayor, we have, we presented the financial and investment reports by email, sent that out to council last week, so you have the opportunity to review it. And then we present it here, so that if you have any questions on either of those reports, please feel free to ask us now. I think what you'll see on both revenues and expenditures on the quarterly reports, you're going to see exactly where we feel we should be at this time of the year. The only investment reports, I think that report looks really good. If you talk, think about a year ago, where we were thinking some of those rates, .25, and now you're seeing us at four and five, those are, those are really good. Part of Sabrina's team consistently looking at how those investments can be maximized to make sure that we're bringing in the greatest amount of return on our investments. That's a big part of how we manage the dollars for our taxpayers. So I think that report's even better than the, than the financial report. Sabrina's confident she can answer any questions you throw at her, Mayor.
On general fund, revenues.
If we get lucky, some of those five percents on the investments will turn to six. But where we're at, you can't complain. Listen, if it's going in one direction, we're going to keep it.
One thing I don't understand is on, those rates that y'all get are the same rates that I get at my, you know, the bank for a CD. I'm just, I always thought maybe if I had more money, I'd get, get a better rate. But apparently, that's not true.
Used to, we had this, you had the opportunity through the state to have separate rates from municipal on our, on our investments, and you thought that those were those larger dollars. But it turns out that now, you almost see a lot of this, the rates are the set rates, and it doesn't depend on the amount of investment to make an impact any longer. It's pretty interesting.
You'd think a longer the term of the investment, the interest rate would be higher, but that's not true either.
Right, because we bought that one, that long-term investment, when the rates were so low. It's just the bad part about the long-term investments.
Motion to accept the report. Move, we accept the fiscal year '24 second quarter report? Any further discussion? Questions, anybody? Thank you, Sabrina. We'll go now to the HR quarter report.
Mayor, this is the same process. This is showing you our HR, human resources report for the quarter. You're going to see a standardized format. We have added a couple items to this report. We're trying to track different areas and allow council to see the positive trends that we're doing, that we're seeing throughout the year, and then some of the challenges. One of the things you're going to see from last year at this time to, to this year is increase in applications. And then you, at the very top of the first page, you're going to see some movement from last year to this year in turnover rates. So we, we broken that down into three categories on the top of that first page. But that's about a percent and a half change from last year to this year, just on all employees. And then we break it down to permanent employees and full-time only. So you'll see a greater increase on those. What we're trying to do is differentiate on the seasonal employees, because the seasonal is still part of our turnover, but we want to draw attention to that, so we can focus on positive trends based on the actions that were taken, having a direct impact on our, on our employee retention opportunities.
Those look a lot of applications. Where is the majority of them going? Like, to what department?
Well, it's based on the advertisements of the positions. So it would depend on what we're advertising. We always get a large majority for public safety.
Positions, fire, and police?
But yeah, so as you can see, and if you look down in, in calendar year 19, we were at 1,315 pre-COVID, and then we started trending downward rapidly. And we are climbing back up. If you look at where we are now, 41% up from, from previous fourth quarter '22. Yeah, we're getting a lot, we're getting a lot of clicks. And what's cool is when you see the clicks before, when we were getting a lot of clicks before you did the positive increase in, in salary, you remember when I came in front and said, "We're getting a lot of clicks, but nobody's applying"? Actually, we're getting a lot of clicks and a lot of applications. So yeah, people are looking at the positions, are interested in them, and applying for them. That's all good news. And another bit of good news that isn't on here, you remember last time I sat with you, I said, "We are making offers, and they're not showing up for their first day of work, or they're scheduled for interviews and not showing for the interviews"? We're not seeing that anymore.
Good.
Yes.
Quick question, how are things looking as far as applicants for police positions right now?
We don't struggle for applications for police positions.
No?
No.
You're not aware of any recruiting efforts that they do?
That we, we do. I'm sorry, I didn't.
So you're not centralizing that?
Yes. We handle all the recruitment that comes through. HR handles all police department and fire, and we have plenty of applications coming in for those positions. You know, being at that conference last week, Mayor, and talking to some of these managers across the state, and I've mentioned a couple of cities that are really struggling with recruitment, chief will show you that right now, our numbers are really strong. I think it's one of the stronger markets in the state in terms of who we're bringing in.
And that's the reason I asked the question, because I know in some parts of the country, also some parts of North Carolina, the numbers are way down. I think Asheville is a prime example of losing a lot of officers and not getting the applicants.
I think we're very fortunate to be at the back door of military base, which is what helps us. If you look at applicant pool, a large portion of those are coming from the military. It is important to note, too, the large, a large percentage of those people that are coming are going into police training positions, so they don't have police background, but they're great candidates.
I think Asheville, in fact, lost almost 40% of their...
They were at, they were at 33% about six months ago, and that's out of 300-plus or minus officers, they were down 100-plus. And Durham also had similar challenges, and some of the smaller towns have the same kind of challenge, it's just not as great of a number total-wise. But you know, a department that may have 12 has four openings, that's 25%, 30% of their staff. And right now, I think our recruitment efforts are, are very strong for police. Our last hiring event that Kimberly's talking about, I think we had seven around the table and a very diverse background of experience from these candidates. And you hope that that, that experience is going to create more longevity for people that are going to stay within the organization.
We handle our recruitment.
How about telecommunicators? I see where you're going to run an orientation program for what the job is like. Do they run it yet?
Yeah, that's a great, great question. What we do with police and telecommunicators now is a different approach, and I think that helps tremendously with our retention rate. We hold what's kind of considered a hiring fair, where we'll bring people, people in, and, and we'll expose them to a day in the life of, and we take them through a process there, instead of going out and doing something individually indifferent, like a hiring event on base. We still continue to do those, but when we bring them in, and they get to see what it is we do, and we have people talk about being a police officer, and walk them through the day of a police officer, we have them talk about being a telecommunicator, we have them go through the public safety department, we have them sit with the telecommunicators, look at what the job would actually look like, the equipment they'd work with. It's just a different way of, of recruiting, kind of like what you do when you, when you treat a football player in college. You bring him on, and you...
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's like a test drive.
Right. So we're taking a different approach, and it's, I think it's really working, so there's no surprises. We've learned some lessons and restructured it a bit. So I will tell you, we took about 85 people through. Our first attempt at this was with the police department, and you learn, right? So we took about 85 people through, and we did our testing, our, our academic testing first, right? And then we moved them over to the physical agility testing, and we lost a lot of people there, so we decided, let's do the physical agility first, so we don't spend as much time and energy on the other end. So we've learned how to tweak it a bit, but it's been hugely successful for both. And so because it was so, we piloted it with the police department, it was so great, we decided to try with telecommunicators. It's working well.
That's how I got that timeshare.
Yeah, pop in and see it. You'll like it.
Let me back up here again and ask you this, do they report their recruiting activities to human resources?
Does who report their...
Police department.
Do they report, we, we work with them, they don't report it to us. We are involved in all of the recruitment.
They take the applications and send them to the police department. HR does.
And then we're involved in the interviews, we, we're involved in the recruitment efforts, the attraction efforts, the interview efforts, where...
The extent of their outreach is what? I mean, do they go to colleges?
Yes, sir.
Do they go to minority colleges?
Yes, historical black universities and colleges, we go to bases, we have a list of places we recruit from, but we do it together. The human resources department and the police department do that together.
That's what I was getting at, is there a coordination?
Oh, yes, yes, sir, of course. We have a team.
We do all the recruitment efforts are centralized through HR. And each department may look at different areas. Part of that program Mr. Bittner's asking about, you think about the street crew, the sanitation crew have challenges, when someone comes on to take this job, they may not know what that job's like, same as police officers. You get on there the first two days, and you decide, this is not the job you want to do. You know, it's great to be able to show an applicant what it's going to be like, the day in the life, so it helps out. All, all recruitment efforts, Mayor, centralized through HR. You'll see on that second page real quick, that we have listed at that time, and remember, this is a point-in-time report, on that time, there's 15 vacancies. Those 15 vacant, those are full-time. They may not be open positions per se, that may not be filled at that time, even though you may allocate for it, that position at this time in history may not be ready to be filled. So for example, if you look at the ERP manager position, we have that budgeted, but we haven't utilized that yet until we get to a point within our ERP transition process that we need to utilize that. So we, some of those positions may even be open until they're needed to be maximized, and you have a couple of these in different departments where, at that point, if they don't have that need at the first part of the year, we don't hire that person yet. So that 15 is phenomenal, out of the, out of the 594 full-time employees. And then you'll see the retirements are on the bottom, and seven retirements, just like you see with that group tonight, I would say that the 10 and 15-year groups, you know, have, you have some fluctuation there. So you start seeing some gaps year over year on the longevity ceremony. So you're looking to see how many longevity ceremonies that are happening in departments in this report, which shows 17. So I think that's a good sign from five to 20 years. It just shows we have some of that, that strong bench power that we talked about before, and not everybody can be Wally's department, where they're all out there for 20-plus years and celebrating. But there's some value there. And so I think that's why we show you this, so that throughout the year, you're seeing those recognitions, you know. And then that third page, Mayor, let me just draw some attention to that real quick. The top of that third page just mentions the 2023 league of municipalities market analysis. Reason we put this here is so that you know where we're at in the process. Remember, we're building the budget with the employee pay and wage market first, the CIP second, and then everything else comes after those two items, as an initiative by council. So right now, Kimberly's team is taking that league market analysis, they're reviewing that information from our defined market, and then they'll bring that in, and we'll pitch that back to council, that we'll put as our, as our budget to start with. And we'll present that as a white paper, and we'll give you that information, so you know where we're at as we look at market and merit, and, and then we'll utilize that process year over year. So we typically get their information December, January-ish, as soon as the league can turn it around, and that's always based on how fast we as cities and towns send the information back to them. Soon as they get us that report, it goes to Tom. Tom starts the analysis, brings the rest of the team in, and then we get that out. So we'll be excited to start working with those numbers around March 5th, what's put down to bring that to you guys.
Good. Very good. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Unless you want us to adopt this report, too?
That'd be nice.
Move, we accept the request for HR quarterly report for January.
Second.
Discussion, any further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, let's go down to the solid waste fund update.
Good evening, Mayor. I promise not to be too brief. Uh-oh.
Dr. Ross, if you have a motion, you can add it.
Tonight, I'd like to start with an introduction. To my left, I have Tony Jacobs, he's actually our sanitation superintendent, he's been with us for about 10 months now, and he comes to us by way of Waidook High School, he actually is local, graduated from Waidook High School, was in the Marine Corps for 23 years, retired as a chief maintenance officer. So I'd like to welcome Tony, he's the one that handles day-to-day operations, coordination, maintenance, and our overall mission, if you get it to the curb, we'll make it disappear. So with that, we'll jump in. Tonight, we want to talk about the solid waste fund. Last year, during the budget process, council set a goal to eliminate the need for general fund transfer, recognizing the other challenges facing the general fund. And with that, we wanted to bring you an update, and then talk about what we did in FY '24, to take that first step, and then what we're proposing as part of your budget in FY '25. So there's no real action for you tonight, but what we would ask is if you see something that you're concerned about, or that you would like us to look into further, just let us know and give us direction. So with that, the solid waste fund handles residential waste, recycling, vegetation, set-asides, bulky items, pallets, like I said, if you get into the curb, we'll make it disappear. We have a small business waste and recycling program that we handle with the same carts or containers that you see at our residence. And then we have the commercial, which is generally our dumpster collection, so we have waste and recycling there. Commercial, from the inception has been, which is, we're talking about the dumpster service, has been self-supported. Historically, the general fund has supported or, or offset the residential and small business portion of the, the solid waste fund. So again, as I mentioned, the overall goal is to try to reduce or eliminate that general fund transfer. So this is the last five years of expenditures, revenues, and general fund transfers. As I mentioned, the, you know, general fund has transferred around $1.4 million into the solid waste fund. And so you, and you can see that it varies there, but what I will say is we, we took some steps in FY '24, and we'll talk about those in just a minute, but you can see right now, expenditures and revenues are tracking pretty close. However, when you look at the overall, and we still have quite a bit of this year to go, and we do have some expenditures that we know are coming with disposal and recycling, those are two of the large ones, and then vegetation, disposal is also a large expense. So we know we have more expenditures coming, but you can see that they're tracking pretty close right now. And then the overall budget is a, for general fund transfers, a little bit deceptive. It says a million dollars, but anything kind of in addition to that million dollars, we're looking at using solid waste fund balance to cover, and that's somewhere around another million dollars. So the, the budgeted shortage this year is somewhere around $2 million, give or take. So, but I did want to kind of bring you up to speed on where we are. So in FY '24, as part of that budget process, we implemented a, an increase in residential and small business collection of $4. So it went from $12 to $16. We also have a $6 disposal, so the total is $22, and I'll show you that in a minute. And we also increased the commercial pickup fee, what we call the commercial dumpster service fee, so that's us driving the truck out there and literally tipping it into our truck, and taking it to the landfill by 80 cent. Doesn't sound like a lot, but that service fee is $8.80. So we did go up there in FY '24. And then we implemented and, and increased some miscellaneous charges that we have in our fee schedule. I would call these additional services, so these aren't in your base service, and most of these were commercial. So we increased the one-time dumpster service fee, so this would be if a business has two time a week service and, or three time a week service, and it's a restaurant, and it's Thanksgiving week, and they need extra service. So we have to schedule that, we have to plan a truck accordingly, because our routes are established, and a lot of that's done by how many, how much can our truck hold? So that fee went up, and we, we went up on the corral cleanup fee periodically. Customers end up with things in their dumpster and in their corrals that they shouldn't have. So they don't know who to call, so they call us. So we go out there and we service those. Typically, we do it with a boom truck, because it's typically large materials. So we, we instant, we increased that fee to cover our cost. And then last, we implemented an event support fee, these would be non-city events, example would be the band, the band jamboree that they have at Northside, that we supply service to them, we supply service to the football jamboree, and a host of others throughout the year. And prior to this fee, we actually didn't charge for that service. So we did institute an event support fee. So this is a residential bill, it is basic service across the board, so it's somebody that uses less than 2,000 gallons of water and sewer, they have no set-asides or any additional pickup for sanitation, and I just, and they have the stormwater fee. So I threw this in here, so you could see, you know, the bill that actually goes out to the resident. So you can see the, the total bill, utility bill, that has sanitation, stormwater, water and sewer, is $82 or almost $83, but the sanitation fee is $22. And I may reference that in just a minute.
That's familiar.
It wasn't yours. It wasn't yours. But, so for the, for FY '25, in keeping with that initiative to reduce the general fund transfer, you know, when we brought a plan to you last year, it was to increase $4 over three years. So this would be the second step of that. And then we were looking at changing the, the additional services, the ancillary services to help support that, because those are above and beyond our basic service. So, you know, and then in the, the third year, we'll evaluate and see where we come out from the first two increases. So this is what your fee schedule will look at for FY '25. What we're proposing is again, that $4 increase, so it would go from $16 for pickup to $20, and then you would add the $6 disposal fee on top of that. So the bill would really go from 22 to 26, as the resident would see it. We have talked to the landfill, we haven't been made aware of any increases, but typically, they are later in their budget cycle than we are. But as of right now, we're not aware of any disposal increases at the landfill.
Because we talked earlier, this is still cheaper than what commercial rates are, correct?
Uh, if they're in just a minute.
Sorry.
You're, you're kind of stealing my thunder. But if you'll give me just a minute, I'll get there. So the, so the additional container would be if somebody has more than one. So that would go up $1, and then you can see for small business, it would go up $1 also. So right now, those additional container fees are $4 for residential, $5 for, for small business. And then we're proposing a new fee, which is the current commercial service response fee. And basically, what this is, is it is quite frequent that we go to a call for service for a commercial customer that has a dumpster, and either needs that dumpster changed out, needs a dumpster delivered, or needs a dumpster taken away, or needs some other service. We show up, and we can't service because it's either blocked, or the corral's locked, or some other host of reasons, and we have to leave and then come back and provide that service. So this is basically a, a fee for us having to respond. We send a truck and a person out there, so we're sending equipment and personnel, and it costs the city money. So we're just trying to recover that, that cost. And then we have, we're proposing some changes to the yard waste service, that's probably the one we'll have the most discussion about tonight, and that we would ask you to think about. And then we're proposing an increase to some of the dumpster rentals, primarily the 4, 6, and 8 yard, not the 2 yard, and I'll explain that also. So with that, I also was able to get a bill, this is a residential bill from a resident that lives in Carolina plantation that will remain nameless, but you can see that they have once a week pickup for 196-gallon container, the same as we provide. They get every other week recycling, and their bill is $62.59. No water, no sewer, no stormwater, just trash.
And no other pickups?
And no, and as it says on the side, if it's not in the cart, it doesn't go. So it is no vegetation, no next-door neighbor moved out and just dumps everything in the lawn, you know, no bulk items, no white goods, this is, literally, if it's not in the cart, it doesn't go.
And how many times, how often does it get picked up? Once a week?
The trash gets picked up once a week, the recycling once every other week.
Two weeks in a year, they could have paid city taxes and got a heck of a better deal, couldn't they?
Again, you stole my thunder. You know, when you compare it to even the city service of what we're proposing at $26, we're still providing an amazing service. And I'm actually going to ask Tony to talk a little bit about that. So with that, I'm going to let Tony explain kind of what we do now on the yard waste program, and, and the challenges that he faces every week.
Yeah, so currently, right now, we have roughly 12,000 residents, and you know, we, we provide a high level of service with a high op tempo, everyday picking up trash, recycling, the bulk items, electronics, all that. And then also using residential to support commercial, doing the dumpster cleanouts, the corral cleanouts, and things like that. So right now, you know, we, we support residential with nine crews. So with trash recycling alone, they're servicing a little over 500 or so accounts a day. And then on yard waste day, we're servicing a little over 1,300, if every resident, you know, not every resident has yard waste out, but we, we canvass 1,300 residents, right? So some of the things, some of the things that we've done, that we're, that we experienced on yard waste is, as you can see right now, what we provide is the unlimited bags for cans of, for pork cans, leaves, grass clippings, things like that, pine straw, one free cord, which is a 4x4x8 pile of loose limbs, that's free. Anything in addition to that is $20. And then right now, we currently operate where they have, they have the option for a one-time fee of $50 to buy a 96-gallon yard waste can, and throw a yellow lid on it, but then it's theirs forever. We don't service it anymore, some of the residents think that we're still going to service it when the wheels break, and unfortunately, we don't do that. So as you can see right here, this is, this is what's free right now, included in the basic service. And we have residents that really enjoy the service. On a weekly basis, we have some residents that'll put out 30, 40 bags, 15 cans, things like that. And as you know, or if you don't know, that's, that's all manual labor. We don't have a truck that can lift these bags, it's all manual labor. So it's a very labor-heavy day on Wednesdays when we do yard waste. And we've had several 10- to 12-hour yard waste days. And so as you... And so as you can imagine, the tax that takes on a human body of performing that level of, of service in a day um is quite taxing. So, you know, you, potentially you could end up with, you know, workers comp issues, throwing your backup. And these bags, you know, they're thirty-two gallon bags that probably only put them to the curb where a thirty pounds, give or take. Then as moisture sets in and it holds that moisture, these bags get up to seventy, eighty pounds, you know? Um, and we do that all day long on Wednesday. And then what that leads to is challenges the next day on Thursday and potentially Friday of uh employees needing a break, needing a day off. Um, you know, we have a mixed bag of as far as age within our labor force within sanitation. So, you know, you know, not everybody's a spring chicken, as they say. So, um, while we've done a really good job uh as a city defining what is a basic level of service for sanitation in regards to, you know, everybody gets trash recycling, you get the bulk pickup, the electronics, things like that. And we've done that with the loose limbs, right? We give them the one free quarter, then twenty dollars after that. Uh, we have not really defined what, what should be included in the basic level of service for all those bag items, which is the harder load for us to, to um, to service on, for our residents. Um, and then as you see here, this is just a picture of some of the piles we took. The one on the left was a free pile. Um, and then on one on the right, that was uh, that was the bill associated with that.
And that, while two hundred and twenty dollars sounds like a lot for that pickup, that filled that truck. So that truck came to that residence, completely filled up its load and had to leave and go dump and then come back and start servicing other piles. So you're talking tying, by the time they go dump, which is out of old thirty, it's a three hour, that's a three hour or three and a half hour job.
Yeah, and then so what happens, there's, there's been several yard waste days with piles like this that we're not able to get to that day. And we try to get ahead of it if we can, um, on Tuesday and Monday sometimes by sending the boom truck out and picking up these larger piles. Cause obviously the residential crew's not gonna get it. Now, the pile that you see on the left, that was probably manually picked up though and thrown in the back of rear loader because the boom truck is tied down with these other big piles that you, obviously you cannot do with my hand.
How many boom trucks do we have?
What's that?
How many boom trucks?
We have three right now, when they're, when they're all running.
And they're all up?
Right. We have one down right now due to some lift cylinders and stuff like that.
On a refuse collection. Every time we've raised a rate, and it hasn't been that many times, but my phone rings. How do we compare, do we have a comparison with uh refuse collection in the county?
I, I can tell you in the county, th- they're way more expensive. Their, their basic level, which is just trash and recycling, even if you use a smaller company than GFL, GFL's a, a large company. So their rates are typically higher. But even if you use a smaller company, we're at least half of what they charge just for trash and recycling. And with GFL, we're about a third, a little over a third.
And that's without all the other services.
And that, and that, and that's not even comparing the white goods that we pick up for free, the yard waste that we pick up for free. And, you know, Tony, Tony's right. It's a, you know, the challenge is this. You know, the challenge isn't the, you know, my next door neighbor who puts it out occasionally. These are, I mean, you can see there, I didn't count the number, but that's probably ten cans that are fifty gallon cans. And they're out almost every week or every other week.
Yeah, right now, we don't typically capture these pictures because they're free of charge. We wouldn't capture these. We would only capture the pictures of the loose limb pile so we can show proof for the bill what it would be. Uh, but as we started getting into this, I started having the guys um take some pictures. And just recently, the week following the New Year's, when we had that short week, when, when we, our first five day work week, um, our crews didn't finish until roughly six o'clock that night on yard waste. And this is in the middle of January when we didn't have great weather. And we had one or two houses, or more than one or two, that had between fifteen and twenty-five bags out of yard. And this is in January, not, we're not talking spring cleaning or fall cleaning either.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
On your horticultural, cultural landfill that you're talking about off old thirty.
Yes, sir.
What kind of, what kind of rate are we paying to dump there?
We pay per truck.
Per truck?
And it saves us a ton of money.
Yeah, going, going to Eastern Excavating, um, we pay thirty bucks for a double axle. And uh, Mr. Terrell, when he was here previously, he had done a study where the amount of tonnage that a rear loader would take. And a rear loader would take roughly between seven and nine tons. I'm sorry, Eastern Excavating is fifty dollars for double axle, I'm sorry. The landfill, if we were to take it to a landfill, that same fifty dollar charge that say had eight tons in it, we would get billed thirty dollars a ton. So now you're going from fifty a truck to two forty, cost-wise.
At Eastern, it's a further job, but it is a significant savings.
Savings in money.
But it also doesn't have to be put in the landfill like that, uh, you know, with all the liner and everything.
This just fills in a hole, right?
That's right.
Safe landfill space.
I don't, just, I have a very large spacious front yard and an even bigger backyard, some trees. If I tried my darndest, I couldn't come up with a third of that a week. Like, that's just baffling.
Like, do they bring that from other areas?
And so it's, obviously I heard, you know, what you're saying, it, it makes perfect sense. If we have a limit for, you know, the cordage of limbs and we have a limit for the number of cans, then there needs to be a limit for the number of cans or bags that are available for yard waste and so much per if it's over because you, you've got to be able to hire enough people to rotate some shifts or do whatever. I mean, you just need more money for people if they're, if, this is gonna be it. It's gonna cost more because there's more labor involved.
Absolutely. And as opposed to, and Wally's gonna get to it later, but as opposed to splitting the cost or whatever across everybody, the, the majority, I won't say the majority, but half the residents put maybe one bag a week or five bags in the fall, like March, for example, and then you may not see another bag until
Spring.
August, right? But if, i- in my opinion, if, if this goes the way it is right now, as the city grows and expands, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very challenging. We're gonna have to come up with some creative approaches to still provide the same level of service under our current personnel and equipment.
Ask you a question. What about, I'm just throwing something out there. If it was treated like how you do the cords?
Yes, sir.
Trying to find out the equivalency of that based on that volume that they have there.
That's a great segue.
Yeah, that's exactly. So when we came up with some of the proposed fees that we, that we were coming up with, we, we addressed it as um doing away with the, the purchasing of the fifty gallon cans and all the things. And then if we were to take six bags of that bag stuff or can, that would equate, equate to, you know, the free cord that they get now. And that's kind of where we came from. I'll, I'll let Wally take it from here.
So that's exactly what we looked at because, you know, when we look at having to increase our base fee that everybody pays, heavier users put a larger burden on that base fee. So we feel like, you know, we need to provide a great service. We want to continue to provide a great service. But we want to clearly define that service and the heavy user, users should pay at least their fair share of the burden they place on the service. So what we did is we looked at um some of the, some options, and this is kind of one that Tony and I settled on, um, looking at operations and, and where we could possibly go in the future. But what we came up with was to limit the leaves and grass clippings to two hundred gallons. That's essentially six of those thirty to thirty-five gallon, you know, paper bags that you buy at Lowe's or Walmart or four fifty gallon cans. We think that's fair. Um, and the other way that we came up with this is Tony mentioned a few minutes ago that we have an optional yard waste can. Maybe you've seen a few out there. They look like the trash can with a yellow lid. Um, that would be the equivalent of two. So we, we kind of, we kind of settled on, we think that would be a good level um of basic service and we would still be providing to, you know, eighty percent of the residents out there, a phenomenal level of service for their base fee. And they bring it to the yard, to the curb, we make it disappear. Um, and then above that, we were looking at three dollars per additional bag. And the way we got to that is if you doubled those numbers, you get to eighteen dollars. So that would be, I'm sorry, did I do that right? Yeah. If you double those numbers, you get to eighteen dollars, which is close to that twenty dollars per cord. So that's, that's kind of how we landed on um this option. And, you know, it, it kind of ties back into, we wouldn't propose to change that um, the one free cord of loose limbs, um, and the twenty dollars per additional cord. The one thing we would, we would propose to add into our fee schedule that we do not have right now is a limit in diameter. Right now, we don't have a limit in, in diameter in our fee schedule. Now, we do put it on our website and it actually says twenty-four inches. So that's a tree shock.
Very large tree.
That's for your own size.
A, a large tree at that. Uh, and, and we don't feel that, you know, I think we kind of grew into this. I don't think that's what we imagined. We, when we said, you know, that we should provide an amazing yard waste service. So what we're proposing is to, just to limit, add a, add language in there to limit it to twelve inches in diameter. I would argue that twelve inches is still more than fair because that's, you get a lot of pine trees under twelve inches. So, um.
That's a lot of weight to lift too.
It is. The good thing about those is we're typically doing it with a boom truck. So it's not as heavy, it's not as tasking on our personnel.
I've seen tree companies, they cut people something on their houses, they'll leave it on the curb because they know it's cheaper for the city to take it than it is for them to do it.
That's exactly what happens.
It clearly states on our website that if a contractor, contractor to cut the tree down, they have to haul it off. By the time we get notified and we go out there, it's somewhat hard to prove sometimes.
Right.
Or the contractor's gone and the resident, especially, especially before a storm. You know, you see heavy tree removal right before a storm and then after a storm, but not during the period where everything's being cleaned up. It's kind of like an afterthought, yeah, while we're here, we should get that tree. So, and then it gets brought out to the, to the curb.
Yeah, and then, you know, with the guidance, you know, the city council's passed along before I got here, we continue to roll with. But what I tell my guys is see trash, get trash. Doesn't matter. We'll, we're in jobs to keep the city clean. We'll figure out the, the fees and all that stuff later on down the road. But there's been plenty of times that we rolled out to a house and we send them the bill. They're like, and, and they call in to complain and they're, and the resident says, oh, no, my, my tree guy said you guys get it for free. So, so you're, you're right that tree cutting companies are definitely taking advantage of that and, you know, um, not being completely honest with the residents.
You might have some grass and shrub cutting companies taking advantage of those bags and cans. That's a lot going on.
I would agree with you.
But with the, with the big, bigger trees, like when you have that picture right there, couldn't some of these tree, don't some of these tree companies sell these things?
Some do, but if you get a, a smaller company, they're, they're just gonna get rid of it. So they don't have a deal with the, with a mill or anything like that. So unless they know somebody, then they're, they're just gonna haul it off.
Yeah, now, the, the, the few times I've seen, you know, people cutting down like cedar trees and things like that, those tree guys, they take that tree with them. But the pine trees, they don't, you know, they don't want that.
Whether or without a change this year, Mayor, one of the things that we want to do is actively reach out to the companies and remind them of what our, what our policies are, what our fee schedule looks like. So at least they know, even if we can't expect the resident to know what it says, we've at least sent the information to the company that says, hey, Davy Tree, this is what it says. So share this with your customer when you're doing work. And, and we can feel a little better, especially if we make a change to it so that people know. And then what Lisa's team will do is they'll work with, with Wally and his team to get the information out to make sure we're sharing that with people because, uh, you know, a lot of times we don't know. And even people that do this often, y- you just don't take the time to look up the rate structure, to know what's gonna be picked up. And like Tony said, we put something out there, they come through and they pick it up. It's like magic and clockwork. They just keep picking it up. And so it's a, it's an awesome service. Expensive and, and very hard work.
And then the, for the, Tony mentioned, right now, we have the optional yard waste can that has the yellow lid. It's a fifty dollar fee. Uh, again, the, you know, the resident paid for it, so they kind of own it. And I can tell you in the last two weeks, we actually had somebody call and let us know that one of our cans had blown into the ditch and, you know, was blocking the ditch and we needed to pick it up. So our crew responded, well, a, a person responded to go remove it from Hubert. A ditch in Hubert. So they picked it up, brought it back to the shop. And within two or three days, the owner of the can calls up and says, you took my can, I paid for it, I want my can back. So, you know, it ends up, you know, the, the great thing is we don't service those cans, but the bad thing is we don't control them either. So, um, in that case, what we're looking at, i- it's an optional can, you know, I don't, I don't foresee us getting every resident a third can because some people just don't need a third can. And, but the, the heavier users are the ones that are going to use two cans every week. They're probably going to want the can because that way they don't have to have their own containers and they don't have to buy bags. So what we're proposing is a three dollar month fee for that can. Basically, that pays that can back somewhere in the twenty-four month timeframe. Um, so that is a different thought than what we've done in the past. But again, it's optional. It's not required. And we feel like if we make it free, then more people will want it than actually need it. So it's also a cost for the city to purchase those cans and then distribute them. So those are
How much does one of those cans cost?
Roughly right now, sixty-seven fifty for the, for the uh trash can. And, and based off the number of red, small, or residences we have, you know, it'd be a seven hundred thousand plus. We issued it to everybody. I'm not proposing anything close to that.
But they're nice to have. I have one. I love it. Cause I get, eliminates the bags. You throw it all in there, wheel it, like you said, it's gone and wheel it back.
And then the other thing to think about too is if we issued it to everybody, you know, puts the occasional bag out, come Christmas time, it's just a second trash can for them.
Yeah, right, so. And the other is, the, the reason we landed on it, you know, the, people do some amazing things to trash cans. So they don't last as long as you would think they do, especially on July fourth or New Year's. It's at least a few decide that they're good fireworks containers. But, you know, they're not designed for yard waste. So I, and I have one and my kids use it. When they pick up grass or leaves, they roll it across the yard and it's not like rolling it, you know, across the concrete to the curb. So it takes a little bit of a beating. They throw it on the ground, rake the leaves into it. So we expect them not to last like the yard waste and the recycling can, cans do either. Um, but that's, that's what we propose for the yard waste and residential small business service. If you're ready, we'll move to what we're proposing for the, for the dumpster rental, the changes we're proposing there. Um, I mentioned we were planning to keep the two yard the same. Um, but we are planning or would like to see an increase in the four, six and eight yard dumpster rental fees. So this is a fee they pay monthly to have a City of Jacksonville dumpster. So you can see we proposed, proposed on the four yard to go up five dollars, the six yard to go up ten dollars and the eight yard to go up to sixty dollars. And here's the reason why. We started this trying to recover our cost at two years, at twenty-four months. And with COVID and some material shortages and the cost of steel, they have significantly increased. And you can see right now at our rate, it's taken, for an eight yard, which is probably the primary dumpster we put out there, it's taken us thirty-eight months to recover the city's investment at the, the prices that we're paying now. So while we didn't take it all the way to twenty-four months, we're proposing sixty. The reason, uh, you know, we're trying not to, to hit everybody all at once. We're trying to step this in. So we, you know, to, to get to twenty-four months, it would be somewhere between seventy and seventy-five dollars rental. Um, so that's, that's the increase we're proposing on the commercial side. Um, just as a service comparison, since we had one for residential, we thought it would be good to show you what we would have for commercial. And I know this is a little bit small. This is a resident, I mean, sorry, this is a restaurant in Jacksonville to, to remain nameless. Um, but they were, they were willing to share a copy of their bill with us. So they actually have dumpster rental or had, this was a July or June bill, um, from twenty-three. But they had dumpster rental from GFL to eight yard dumpsters. They had recycling carts, the ninety-six gallon cart rental uh from GFL. And that's because of their ABC permit, they're required to recycle glass. Um, and they had recycling service of one time a week. And I'll re- just remind the council that we cannot mandate that a company use the City of Jacksonville for recycling service because some recyclables have value and they own those. So some of them have uh cardboard contracts where So some of them have, uh, cardboard contracts where a company pays them for the cardboard. We do mandate that they use the city dumpster service or waste collection. So we provided two time a week waste. So you can see, for the service they were getting from GFL, they were paying four hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-four cent a month. From the service, they were, the two time a week service they were getting for the city, for the two eight yard dumpsters, they were paying four hundred and one dollars and fifty-two cent a month. So their total sanitation bill for two cart recycling, two eight yard dumpsters was eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. I went and talked to them about switching to all city service. So they now rent their dumpsters from the city. They have recycling, um, from, they, they got the carts from us. We do not have a fee for our carts. So they're not paying anything for the carts. We do have a recycling fee for glass, um, associated with ABC permit holders. And that's ten dollars per cart. So they actually added a third cart for thirty dollars. And, um, one quick note, the dumpster rental is calculated the fee that I just showed you, the sixty dollars. And you can see the, the dumpster service saved the same. We saved this business three hundred and thirty-three dollars a month.
Who determines on what size they get? Is it the customer size, the type of business, or is it y'all?
It's some of, all of it.
All those things, yes, sir.
And it's like, I know like Down Henderson Extension, for instance, you like go there before trash, so you have all the cans. Like, what decides that, is it, like, how that place is developed there, on, they don't have dumpsters or?
The, the place you're talking about, like, uh, on Henderson, you're coming to seventeen, right? Um, there's nowhere, there's nowhere to put it, to safely put it dumpster, that we could actively service. That's why you see the
The cans.
The five, this, five day trash.
So, and they're, they're on the small business. So they are being charged, but, um, but if, sorry, if they have room for dumpster, then we, um, require them to go to dumpster service if they generate that much trash.
Gotcha. Is that something that you decided during, like, the development stage?
Yes, sir. So, and they, they do have options. So if, if they're, you know, if, based on their historic generation, that type of business would generate an eight cubic yard dumpster picked up twice a week, they can go to a four and do four times a week. You know, if they don't want that large of a dumpster sitting there. Um, so there are some options. So, n- next steps, like I said, there's no real action for you tonight. We would just ask for your input as we, especially as we've gone through the budget process, um, so that we can, you know, solidify our fee schedule and get it submitted. Uh, and just consider the, the proposed fee schedule as part of, uh, the budget process.
No, you're looking at, uh, for the commercial businesses, getting your, your payback two years on, on the initial investment, especially the eight yards. But if you, how often do you replace those? Because I, I guess what I'm saying is you're gonna be charged in an existing business who's already had it. Maybe that's, maybe that dumpster's already been paid for or whatever.
So, we anticipated this question, because that's the question I would have asked.
I anticipated every other question.
But it's, it's a great question, because our businesses would ask this also. Matter of fact, I think the manager, or Ron, asked this as we were talking. So, um,
Ron's almost as smart as I am.
But it depends. I hate to say that, but it really does. If you're talking about a restaurant that has wet, heavy waste, we're doing repairs before two years. If you're talking a retail business or a, an office, then they last much longer. So Tony and his crews try to do a very good job of monitoring our dumpsters. And we typically try to keep newer dumpsters at the restaurants. And then before they get to the end of their service life, we rotate them to a less heavy user to extend those. But if you were to leave one at a restaurant that has wet waste in two years, maybe stretch it to three, we'll replace the whole bottom at half the cost of a new dumpster. Maybe, maybe two thirds the cost of a, a new dumpster.
And we send that out. So unfortunately, instead of doing the small repairs where maybe we have a welder on hand that's gonna weld a spot, uh, here, they're sending it out, cutting out the bottom, replacing, replacing the bottom. And then, as Wally's saying, that's, that's half the cost. You're still getting the shell, which is great, but it does have a, a bit of expense. So what we hope is that it balances out between the restaurant customers and the other customers. So back to your point, it's hard to, to pick out who's gonna charge for that unless you decide to diversify the cost and then restaurants pay more, offices pay, pay a different rate.
And they do, and they do, they're not, you know, it's a metal dumpster, you know, and you would think that it's, but it's being picked up in the air by two metal sleeves and then it's being shaken to get all the stuff out of it and then put back down. Sometimes not as hard as, I mean, not as soft as we would like to see. Um, and this is all be done, being done in the dark with one light on it, you know, it's, so it's, they do take a beating.
Oh.
We still, we still, uh, get many tickets for those wet dumpsters?
We haven't had any in a while. We actually, um, went through a period where we started challenging the fees that, or the fines that they sent us. And you can, you can basically write a letter and they, they do an internal review. It doesn't have to go to court. And, um, we showed some discrepancies in what they were sending us. So they, um, they did waive a few fines for, for us. And shortly after that, the fines came less frequently.
What were the fines averaging each time?
I don't remember, but it, pretty much, the problem with a, a, uh, front loader is it dumps and then it compacts to the back. So you have no way to spread the weight out over the truck. So if they didn't get us for being overweight on the full truck, they would just hit us for overweight on an axle and they ranged from five hundred dollars to eighteen hundred dollars. But it, you know, I hate to say it, but the way those trucks pack, if you have a full truck that's near the limit, sixty-six thousand pounds, if it's near the limit, you could probably get us on a over axle weight, because we can't distribute the weight evenly.
And to the point that Mr. Ray made about repairing the dumpster bottles, I found a company this year, we did, we sent in it and it was roughly half the cost of the dumpster. But when they did it, they replaced, they repaired the sleeves and that's the, the sleeves on the side that the arms go in if they were messed up. They completely replaced the, the, the lids of, they, they repaired the doors on the side and painted it all new color for us. And the bottom, it was about a four inch wall like this. Uh, I don't know the gauge, but it was significantly, almost three times thicker than the metal is on the dumpster when we originally get it. And we just did that, um, uh, I think it was May or April of last year. So we'll see how those dumpsters fare out over the lifespan of them. But I think it was, they should last significantly a lot longer than the original dumpsters that we did.
Have you ever looked at, this might be a little out of the box, but have you looked into offering like cleaning services for them? It's a big business in a lot of areas, that people do that with commercial and, uh, it, it started to catch on. Have y'all seen these, how they come?
I, you know, if I could have my one request for like commercial or for, for sanitation that's like out of the box, they make a, they make a truck that cleans cans and dumpsters where you, you follow your, your truck through and you pick it up just like you would dumping it. But it's got a pressure washer and it washes and deodorizes the inside of the can. And you can do all the way up to, on the truck, you can do up to like a four or six yard. To do an eight yard, it's typically a, a special truck you have to do on the rear. I would love to have that service.
It's pretty neat. I mean, you watch the YouTube videos on it and it's big business in a lot of areas. I mean, they charge top dollars.
There's a, a truck, we, we, Wally just kind of talked about it one day, but we looked at stuff, but you know, one of the trucks, you know, they save, they conserve the water. They save, it doesn't go in the drains. And, um, I looked up the nearest one right now, I think they're as close as, uh, Surf City. So it's only a matter of time before that company does move into the city, I'm sure.
But it would be an amazing service. And I think that's one that it wouldn't pay for itself right away, but it is something that you could charge for.
Sounds like a summer job for kids.
Water hose and a broom and a mop.
A mop.
Some goggles. No, one of the ones we looked at, it's, it's thirty seconds for a can.
Oh, wow.
And it steam cleans it and everything. So, I mean, it, it uses hot water and a deodorizer.
Yeah, the bigger ticket on the commercial side, to me, if we ever went down that road, would be on the restaurants.
Yeah.
Yes.
Of, uh, because there's stuff that sticks in it, no matter how much we shake it, you know, it just doesn't come out.
Well, like the Department of Health, they make you keep the plugs in there. So then you get all that junk and all the juice and the beer and the food garbage. I mean, they get gross in there.
Yeah, they get a big line if that plug's out.
Yeah, they can't have it when they check their dumpster pads.
Yes.
So. It's like a swimming pool. A lot of times those kids, they leave the cans open and dump the rain. You get six, eight inches of rain in there, plus all the junk.
Yes.
That's rust in the can.
And that's, and that's when we're, the commercial trucks are the heaviest is after heavy rains.
Yes. And that's when they, that's when the state troopers would show up also. It's following a Monday after a rainy weekend.
Well?
Mayor, this, this preempts the, the fee schedule. As, as Wally and Tony said, these are items that we're gonna include in the fee schedule. If you've got questions prior to then, and obviously during our review session for FY twenty-five, we'll bring that up. But these are the items that we, that we plan to include, want to get that to you on the front end, so it's not a backend consideration. You're gonna see the entire fee schedule, but utilizing this concept in year two of what council said last year, we're gonna implement those fees into the proposed twenty-five when we present that to council. Then if you choose to take them out, you take them out. You choose to leave them in, then we leave them in. But that's how the numbers will be presented, just based on that presentation. If you have any other questions, just send it to us and we'll get the answers back to you at that time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Mayor, that's the, that's the other, um, end of what we had on the business items. We do have a, a couple of one city moments I wanted to bring to you. On, uh, Groundhog Day, also Snow Day, we had our second snow event at the Commons. And this event occurred over at the amphitheater. So we utilized the amphitheater. Uh, over eight hundred people showed up for the event. If nobody except for that young lady showed up on the right, it's totally a success.
Well, on the left was.
These guys on the left.
It's like the bad joke that the mama plays.
The mom, the mom looks happy. The rest of them, maybe not so much. But these are some of these small events. We had the snow, we had sliding, ice skating and the snow machine. The ice skating is phenomenal. You see this in a lot of places where we're able to create an ice skating rink. And this is the closest we have to snow this year. And I think it's, I think it's an awesome add, uh, for our parks and recreation crews. Uh, they work pretty hard to get it set up. Just the process of adding snow and ice to make it happen, it's impressive. For anybody that sees them down at, at Riverwalk Park, we do that event. They're taking ice blocks out of the back and making snow nonstop and it's an awesome time for everybody. So, uh, that was, that was really cool to see that event, um, and, and to see the, the feedback that we're getting. Um, and then I just want to give you an update, when this event hasn't happened yet. So the African American Read-In, uh, celebrating twenty years of programs in Jacksonville, that's gonna be this Sunday. So here's the flyer, February eleventh, two to four, at Jack Amiette. Uh, if you're, someone said the Super Bowl's Sunday, um, Patriots aren't in it, so it's not as important. But, uh, but that's, uh, that's gonna be after. So you've got plenty of time to make it over to Jack Amiette, two to four. We'll, we'll give you some follow-up after the event. But super exciting to have, uh, to have this event and have it over at, at Jack Amiette. Last year, we were here in City Hall, so I'm excited to see how this is gonna, uh, play out this year. A lot of fun. So we have, Mayor.
All right. So this time, I entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Discuss the name of acquisition and, uh, economic development update.